We'll invite the scouts to come forward and we'll get started in just a moment. Welcome to our first Gilbert Town Council meeting of the 2014 year. I'm Mayor John Lewis. On January 16, 2014, I now call the meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Reverend William Jefferson, of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, Gilbert Lodge 2848. After the invocation, Councilmember Taylor will introduce one of our scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We invite those in council chambers to please arise.
May we please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today, and for those who are watching, thank you for our numerous and plentiful blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our chosen work, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for our ability to be involved in useful endeavors, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you. Father, grant our mayor and council the wisdom to govern amid the multitude of conflicting interests and issues of our times. Allow them the sense to truly understand the needs of every citizen. Grant that they will maintain a faithful thirst for justice and rightness. Confident in always recognizing your will, Father, we ask that you continue to provide our citizens with the ability to work together in harmony even when there is sincere disagreement. And Father, allow all of your children to maintain personal peace in their lives and joy in each task undertaken for the benefit of the individual and the entire community, guiding us so that our judgment will always be clear. Of these things we ask, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Mayor Lewis, we have Troop 80 here tonight, and Dallin, the patrol leader, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dallin, why don't you come over here? There we go, and the flag's right here.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're so glad that you've joined us here for council meeting tonight. We're going to ask that you introduce yourself by telling us your name and rank, and once we do that, then we're pleased to present you a copy of the U.S. Constitution tonight. Okay?
Solomon Strong, Scout.
Kayden Shope, Scout.
Dwight King, Scout.
Skylar Merrill, Scout.
Max.
Max Andrews, Scout.
Alec Morris, Scout.
Angelo Henry, Scout.
Dallin Wallace, Scout.
Brian Wallace, Scoutmaster. These are our 11-year-old scouts, so we're just barely getting started, so...
You have a great-looking patrol here. Thank you for being... Mayor, do you have any words for our scouts here?
I'm impressed. Thank you for coming. These are our future leaders, and here they are tonight to get us going. Thank you. We will continue. We'll invite the scouts to be seated. We'll continue with the roll call. Town Clerk Kathy Templin will now do that.
Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor. For him is present.
Thank you. For some of our team members who will participate in the next few minutes, we'll do Agenda Items 1, and then 1B, and 3 and 4, and then we'll do 2, in that order. In other words, we'll do the presentation of the annual audit report at the end of the presentations. Agenda Item number 1 is recognition of Ben Cooper for services as Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Cooper, thank you. I have many comments and thoughts. Some related to economic development, some related to all the jogging that you did this past year, but to keep it short, Vice Mayor Cooper has been part of Gilbert, living here for 30 years. Graduate of Gilbert High School, he is one that in all of his actions shows his love and appreciation for Gilbert, for the citizens, and fits into that category of servant leadership like no one else I know. So on behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, Town of Gilbert, all of the 231,000 Gilbert residents, we thank Vice Mayor Cooper for your service, and we are pleased to present to you a wonderful engraved pin. I know that's a little bit hard to see on the TV screen, but this is one that has your name engraved on it, the time that you served as Vice Mayor, and if those in council chambers could please join me in a nice round of applause for Vice Mayor Cooper. Vice Mayor Cooper, if you'd like to make your comment, please.
I was going to move to...well, no, I won't, but thank you for this pin. Autographs afterwards with the pin this time instead of one of these pencils. No, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity, and thank my council members, fellow council members, for the opportunity to serve, and thank the mayor for the wonderful privilege of serving as your right-hand man for a year, even though the right-hand man probably didn't know what he was doing. I do appreciate the opportunity to learn from you and to work with you, and I'm thankful to the town staff for all of the support that they've provided throughout the year, and just give my best wishes to whomever might be selected in 2014. It really has been an honor, so thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda Item 1B is the selection of a new Vice Mayor. We only do this once a year, and so following the script that's on the town council meeting, the mayor announces the nominations are in order for the office of Vice Mayor. Nominations are now being accepted.
Mayor?
Please, Councilmember Peterson.
I nominate Eddie Cook to office of Vice Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Are there any other nominations? With that, a vote is taken on only one name, and should we do it electronically or just a voice vote?
Electronically.
Okay, thank you. With that motion, second, please vote. With that, Vice Mayor Cooper is released, and we now say Councilmember Cooper and Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, if the two of you could trade places. Now, we could still, with the electronic vote, we could still do that and show it in five or seven, and then we could make note. Okay, and we'll watch that closely. Vice Mayor Cook, welcome. Your service is appreciated. Are there any comments you would like to make?
Well, I want to thank Team Gilbert, and it's truly an honor and a privilege to look at this position as truly a position of service. And I have six other great role models that have been kind to help me through that process, and staff has been very kind to help, you know, an individual has not done this before, but it truly is a sincere privilege and an honor to do this, and I look forward to filling the shoes of Vice Mayor Cooper, and I can continue the tradition of being your right-hand man. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item will go to number 3. As Councilmember Ray reads the pillar of the month, fairness, we'll invite those who will be part of Agenda Item Number 4, the recognition of Scott Anderson's 25 years of service to the town, to please come forward.
This month's highlighted pillar is fairness. As council members and town staff, we are committed to listening and being open-minded. We promise to act in a manner that doesn't place blame or take advantage. We take pride in being fair.
Mayor, it's an honor to stand here and have the opportunity to thank William Scott Anderson. After all these years, I didn't know. Wonderful. I'm going to just read very briefly a little bit about Scott and his time here at the town. This is a certificate of appreciation from the mayor. "On behalf of thousands who have and will visit the Riparian Park in the future, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Riparian Institute Director and Parks and Recreation Manager William Scott Anderson upon his retirement from the Town of Gilbert. Since 1988, Scott has served the Town of Gilbert admirably in many roles. His career has been a sterling example of dedication and professionalism, and reflects great credit upon himself and the town." Scott began with the town as the Planning and Zoning Director, and back then, when you first started in '88, there was about 20,000 people, and in the 12 years you were in that role, you saw the town grow to over 100,000 people. Since 2002, you've been working with the Riparian Institute and the Parks and Recreation Department, and you founded the institute in 2000, if I'm reading this right, and since then have been committed to educating the public about the importance of water recharge and the riparian habitat to our community and state, and you leave a legacy which the Town of Gilbert can be quite proud. And really proud, I know many of our citizens really enjoy all of the riparian habitats we have here, but it's not just the Town of Gilbert citizens that enjoy it. We have folks that come from all over the world even, and visit and see what neat things that have been developed there, and we appreciate your leadership for that. With that, I'm going to hand the microphone over, let you say a few words about your time here, and maybe introduce the person standing next to you, if you'd like, who's been there supporting you all along the way.
You bet. Thank you, and it's a privilege to have served this community for the past 25 years, and I really appreciate all of the many experiences that I gained while doing that. And I'll introduce my lovely wife, E.J. Anderson, who is here with me, who has been a great support, my entire family's been a great support throughout that whole 25 years. You know, Ben's dad actually hired me 25 years ago, and I've seen many changes in this community. I've seen, I think, six mayors, six councils, and I've spent a little bit of time down in these chambers. I think our record was 2:00 in the morning, listening to zoning cases, and I know Sean can relate to that back there. But the satisfaction is seeing the projects actually come to fruition that we saw on the drawing boards, communities like Agrotopia and Seville and some of the other great communities in Gilbert, and I'm really happy to see that they turned out the way that we planned that they would turn out, and it's a great tribute to the members of the staff in the Planning Department. And the Riparian Institute, it's been a privilege to be able to participate in the creation of a great asset for the community, and I hope that in years to come, that will continue to draw people to our community, to learn more about riparian areas, and learn more about water recharge, the importance of water management in our community as well as in our state, and I hope to be able to continue to support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. I know the mayor has a few words, and then we'll do picture and go from there.
In just a moment, we'll hand you the coasters also as a token of our appreciation and for 25 years of service. It is hard to put into words appreciation for 25 years of service, and I really liked how the newspaper article summarizing what has happened over the last 25 years did the title, "The Riparian Founding Father," because that's a term that we love to use and to think of the founding fathers of our country. We do have in Gilbert a lot of wonderful assets. We do not have Disneyland, but we have a riparian park, and that riparian park is known throughout the world, and visitors come, and it's one of our jewels, one of our great assets, and in addition to everything you did over the 25 years, that is a legacy that will also be there forever with that riparian park, as far as I can see. And so we thank you, and I would ask all here in council chambers if you can join me in the best we can as far as thanks at this point, a nice big round of applause. We will turn to our team to do the presentation on the annual audited reports, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council members. My name is Florence Schultz, and I'm the Accounting Manager in the Finance and Management Services Department. I'm here tonight to present the comprehensive annual financial report, as we like to call CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013, in addition to the Expenditure Limitation Report and the Single Audit Report. First of all, I would like to thank all of my staff in the Accounting Division, and also to give a special thank you to Dana Felici, who in the preparation of these reports. The Accounting Division has great staff. I feel very fortunate to be able to work with such wonderful and hard-working people. We all work very hard to ensure the accuracy of these reports. Just wanted to point out one difference between this year's CAFR and last year's CAFR. One additional note has been added this fiscal year, and that's Note 10, called "The Post-Employment Healthcare Benefits," starting on page 63. GASB Statement Number 45 requires us to provide information regarding our retirees who choose to continue receiving medical and/or dental benefits and the impact they have on Gilbert's future cash flows. An actuary provided most of the data in this note. Then I would also like to point out again that this year we have received no audit findings. If you have any questions regarding Note 10 or any other questions on any of the other reports, please contact me. With that said, I would like to introduce to you Cory Arvisu, Audit Partner at Heinfeld Meach and Company. He and his staff performed the audit of these reports. He would like to say a few words about the audit and then the audit results. Cory?
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you the results of the 2013 audit, then certainly answer any questions you may have for us as your auditors and the test work we do during the audit. I know you've been provided the documents. I'll just make some comments on some of those documents, or highlight certain items on some of those documents, just to provide some additional insights from my perspective. As Florence indicated, the primary document is the comprehensive annual financial report, essentially the town's financial statements. That's the town's financial statements and provides all the information required, disclosures and financial reporting for the Town of Gilbert. As Florence indicated, it's a comprehensive annual financial report. Essentially what that means is there's some additional information in there for both you, the constituents, grantors, whoever may be using the report. Starts off with the transmittal letter, really just an introductory letter to the financial statements, highlights some of the growth plans, some of the initiatives, some of the long-term planning of the town, really just a good opportunity for the town to comment on some of those items, or at least put it out there for the users to read on some of that information. Not a required part of the financial statements, once again, just an introductory letter, set the stage, so to speak, for the report itself. After that is our auditor's report on page 1. That's on our letterhead, our opinion that the financial statements are materially correct, that users could rely on the financial statements. If you took a close look, you might notice the report itself looks a little bit different than it did last year if you were to compare the two. That was just some changes in our audit standards this year that changed the format. The substance of our audit report and what it says really didn't change, just really some formatting and moving around of language in that auditor's report. After that is the management's discussion and analysis. That is a required part of a financial statement for a governmental entity. A narrative overview, really intended to, once again, discuss certain key items, do some comparisons from the prior year, what changed, intended to address some of the significant changes in revenues, expenses, fund balances, and so forth. After that, the financial statements actually start after that management's discussion and analysis, and you'll see the financial statements follow that. Really no significant changes there. Once again, if you took a close look, you may have noticed the term "net assets" has now been replaced with the term "net position." The powers that be felt that term was more useful than net assets. Terminology only, that it really didn't change or impact how the numbers were presented or accounted for. After that, after the financial statements or the notes to the financial statements, really just intended to provide some additional insight as far as some of the key numbers are concerned in the financial statements, whether that be the town's investments, the debt, capital assets, and so forth. So, once again, required, we do look at the disclosures to ensure they meet the reporting requirements. And as Florence indicated, there was one, no significant changes in the notes, other than the addition of that disclosure related to the healthcare benefits and the related obligation. After the notes is some more detailed information about some of the town's funds. In a typical financial statement, this would not be there, but as indicated, since the town... the town does prepare the comprehensive report, you can see that detailed information on some of the town's specific funds, such as the grants funds or the streetlights project fund. So, once again, some additional insight for yourself and users of the financial statements. Then the report wraps up with this statistical section, just some tenure trend information. You can really see how the town has changed, evolved over the years with respect to some of the revenues, expenses, has some additional information on taxpayers and just general demographics, very useful information. And truthfully, the users of your financial statement, whether that be bond advisors or the grantors, really do take a close look at your statistical section and do rely on it. And a lot of that information helps the town meet its continuing disclosures for its bonded debt. So, very useful section. That pretty much wraps up the CAFER. Some of the additional reports you received were the single audit reporting package, as the town is a recipient of, I think, about $1.6 million in federal revenue. Some additional audit requirements are in effect, were to look at certain federal requirements on some of the town's federal programs. This year, we looked at the CDBG Grant Fund. Once again, required because the town does receive a certain amount of federal funding. Another report issued was the Expenditure Limitation Report. This is a required report by the state of Arizona, just comparing the town's expenditures to its state-mandated expenditure limitation, and that is filed with the Auditor General. And lastly, one of the documents we provided was, we call it our Audit Communication Letter, just another communication from us as your auditors to the council, just addressing certain required items that were to communicate to you. If we were to have any disagreements with management during the audit, we'd have to report it to you in that letter. We did not, and the letter indicates as such. If there was uncorrected misstatements, we'd be required to report that to you, which there were not. But required communication if certain issues were to come up, you'd see that in that letter, but none were noted. Just a little bit of insight on the audit, and I'll wrap it up. We obviously spend quite a bit of time onsite, working with staff. It's typically over the course of three different weeks. We'll have two to three staff. I think we budget and plan for about 500 hours of staff time invested in this audit. Obviously, look at all the significant areas reported in the financial statements, whether that be cash and investments, debt, capital assets, look very closely at most of the revenues and expense line items. Going forward, next year, another small change in the financial reporting, that the financial statements will look a little bit different, but the accounting for the numbers won't change significantly. And in 2000, I believe in 2015, the significant change, and you likely have heard of this or seen of this through some of your discussions or conferences or other information you may have received on the pension plan, the town's participation in the state pension plans, they'll be required to, the town will be required to report its pro-rata share, so to speak, of the obligation that, the unfunded obligation that the state pension plans do have. The town's pro-rata obligation will be required to be reported in the financial statements. And I do know, we've been working with management and staff the past couple of years and preparing for that. They'll likely keep you informed of how that may affect the financial statements and any potential decisions you may need to make with respect to that new reporting requirement. With that, I'll wrap it up, just with a comment that staff, very cooperative, helpful, and audits really only as effective as the cooperation we get from management and staff. And, you know, we work with a number of departments and individuals, it's just not finance, and everyone's very cooperative, gets us the information we need in a timely manner to allow us to perform an effective audit. So, certainly, we certainly appreciate that. With that, I'll certainly turn it over to Mayor, to yourself, or any members of the council that may have questions regarding the financial statements or the audit we perform for you.
Thank you. From the council, any questions, comments? Looks like another thorough job. We appreciate the service. Thank you. Before we go to communication from citizens, occasionally, it is nice at the beginning of a meeting to make announcements, especially on community events. I'll make a comment about an event on Saturday night, and then Councilmember Taylor, if you can talk about the event on Monday. And we do have in just a moment, one of our communication from citizens, we'll get in more detail, but for the council, I'm going to give you a copy of an invitation that's at the back of council chambers to the annual Gilbert Lions Bluegrass Bash. And so you'll know, once again, I have not been asked to come and sing, but I'm going to have the privilege to be the emcee. And I thank Gilbert Lions for that opportunity. It starts at 7:00 p.m. at Gilbert High School on Saturday night. Details are on the flyer, and we'll get a few more details in just a minute. The other event, community event, will be Monday morning. Councilmember Taylor, tell us more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. The event Monday morning is titled "Make the Dream Real," and it's a celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. here in Gilbert. Couple of the details, well, all the details are online at gilbertaz.gov, but just some of the highlights, Monday morning, between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, there's an opportunity to go to the Higley Arts Center and see some of the vendors, sponsors, some of the nonprofits in our community, and learn a little bit more about a lot of those great organizations. Then at 9:00 o'clock is the formal ceremony, and that runs from 9:00 to 11:30. A lot of wonderful music, an aspiring speaker, Calvin Terrell will be the keynote speaker. So, very much looking forward to that and encourage everyone. We know the school's out, so it's a great educational event to kick off your day on Monday morning, the 20th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We move to the communication from citizens. Members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cook, what requests we have tonight?
Mayor, we have two individuals that would like to speak. May we have John Marcellus, and then after John, will be Carlisle Begay.
And John, as you come forward, I think you've seen this before. For the record, if you can state your name and whether you are a Gilbert resident, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. My name is John Marcellus. I'm the president of the Gilbert Lions Club, and I am also a resident of the town of Gilbert. And as the mayor just alluded to a few minutes ago, Saturday night is our fourth annual Bluegrass Bash. This started out as a kind of a, well, we're going to try it and see how it works, and it really took off, and as you can see now, we're in our fourth, our fourth year. Last year, Mayor Lewis was the emcee, as well as he will be again this year. It takes off on Saturday night, January 18. It'll be at the Gilbert High School at the auditorium. Returning for the second year are the Sonoran Dogs. If you're in a bluegrass setting or circle, you probably know who they are. They were the 2013 Rocky Grass Band finalists, and they are highly notable in their circle. Also, that evening will be the Burnett Family, a bluegrass family from northern Arizona, one of the up-and-coming groups on the bluegrass track as well. And as I mentioned, the Honorable Mayor Lewis will be our master of ceremonies. We're going to have a silent auction added to this event this year, which we never had, excuse me, before, and we will also have door prizes. So, it's kind of going to be a very unique, we're kind of throwing different things out to see how it'll work. The purpose of the event, for the Gilbert Lions anyway, the purpose of, is to raise money for the community, and all the money raised goes back to the community in the form of eyeglasses, scholarships. There's so many things that the Lions Club does. We're the largest international organization in the world. Our venue has over 200, we're in 200 countries. We have a million 300,000 members, and Gilbert Lions, we have a small group of 25 members, but we take pride in what we do, and we raise the money and the funds go back right to the community to enable a child in school to see a computer or to read a book. We provide eyeglasses. We just gave a Gilbert resident a gift of, he had somacular problem, macular degeneration problems, and he was also having cataract problems. We enabled him to see more clearly what we, some of the things that we were able to do for him. Like I said, we take great pride in what we do. The motto of the Lions is "We Serve," and that's what we do in the community, and I thank you, Mayor Lewis, for the opportunity to speak this evening. Like I said, it's Saturday night. Tickets are $8. They'll be available at the door, the Gilbert Auditorium, right off of Elliott, just west of Val Vista. And the program starts promptly at 7:00. We will have water available at a nominal charge. There is no food or beverages allowed in the auditorium. So, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
And as the agenda says, we cannot comment, but I just wanted to emphasize again, the mayor is not singing, he is emceeing. We don't want to scare anyone away, but it is a great event and invite the community. Our second, I have a feeling we have a very special guest here, Senator Begay.
Yes.
Senator, welcome. Good to have you here, from our state senate.
I wouldn't say a special guest, just a guest. By way of introduction and public record, my name is Carlisle W. Begay, State Senator for Legislative District 7 in northern Arizona, is the largest district in the state of Arizona, so definitely a privilege to be here tonight. My purpose of being here is I'm not a permanent resident of the city of Gilbert, despite what the media says, but I do own a home here in the city. But just wanted to take a moment to recognize you, Mayor, and the council for your leadership in offering a Native American management internship program specifically for Native American students and graduate students here in the state of Arizona. Growing up on the Navajo Nation, growing up with no running water and electricity, much like rural Arizona does live still to this day, my grandfather taught me from a very young age that my generation and future generations are the future of our people. And there are four principles that my grandfather and parents taught me. One was to get an education. Two was to make the most of every opportunity. Three was to find something you're passionate about, and four, find a way to make a difference. And I commend you for offering this opportunity for Native American students and giving them perspective for your city and for the city manager and for your great government, intergovernmental staff that I've gotten to know very well of late, for the many opportunities to learn and hopefully give back to their communities. So, I just wanted to commend and say give you a moment of appreciation and thanks publicly. Thank you very much.
Senator Begay, thank you for coming, and we'll be cheering you on in your service as the legislature begins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, any other requests to speak at this point in the meeting?
Mayor, I believe we don't.
Okay, thank you. We will move to the consent calendar, and before I read what's on the agenda, do we have some requests from the council?
Yes, Mayor, we will be pulling Agenda Item Number 7 and Agenda Item Number 10.
Okay. And as the agenda says, the items listed below, and this would be 6 through 15, are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council members for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. With the comment from Vice Mayor Cook, pulling Agenda Items 7 and 10, is there a motion for the other agenda items?
Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve Agenda Items 6, 9, 11, 13, 14, and 15 for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote.
Mayor, just a quick comment, 13 was removed.
And 14.
Thank you. So, just to clarify that motion, it would be for Agenda Items 6, 9, 11, and 15. Does that sound correct? Okay. And for those in council chambers, as was noted earlier, if we do an electronic vote, the vote that we'll see on the screen related to Vice Mayor Cook and Councilmember Cooper will be reversed, and if it's a 7-0 vote, let's say it's probably no problem. Otherwise, we'll want to have our town clerk verbally note that for the record, and we'll work together. So, back to that motion and second, please vote, and we'll do it electronically. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 7?
Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I'll keep it very brief. I just wanted to point out one of the strings attached when we use the federal grant dollars here, and that is the Davis Bacon Act on the contract. What this means for us is that there's a requirement to pay at least a certain wage for different tasks on the job, and this is far above minimum wage. That means that the taxpayers are going to pay more for less. So, not only are we using money that, to me, belongs to the children and grandchildren of tomorrow, we aren't even getting the full bang for their buck today. And since the vote on whether or not to accept this grant money is water under the bridge, it's already taken place, and I don't have a problem with this specific contract, I'll vote for it, but I just want to let everyone know I will continue to push for reform on a larger issue. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 10. Vice Mayor Cook, who wishes to speak on that?
Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Taylor, please.
Mayor, if I understand this agenda item right, this is to fund a contract to put an additional streetlight down Gilbert Road at Vaughan. Just want to share my observation, as an operator of a business in downtown Mesa, you know, we've seen over the years kind of the narrowing of vehicular traffic and additional streetlights, light rails coming down, and it hasn't necessarily had a positive economic impact on the downtown. And I realize, streetlights aren't the only thing that drive traffic into these stores. Mesa's a little different than Gilbert in a lot of ways. In this area, Mesa has the advantage of First Street and First Avenue, where there can still be significant traffic come down to see some of these businesses. So, when I see an addition, but we don't have that here, and so, an additional restriction downtown really just makes it a place to go if you know really where you want to go. I've heard comments from other citizens that it's just so hard to go down there, they're going to go to Lindsay or Cooper to really go north and south, and I think that has a negative impact on people just driving by and discovering some of the wonderful new businesses and development that's there that they, you know, don't see in their advertisements or something like that. So, not really seeing a positive economic, I'm kind of putting those glasses on when I see this, and I don't really see this as a positive, because there are a lot of non-streetlight pedestrian crossings there that I think still help us meet the goal for the downtown and a lot of pedestrian traffic. So, I wanted to share that observation with the council on Number 10.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. This really is about pedestrian safety, and as we've looked at some of the issues that have come up in our downtown, we want that to be a walkable area, we want that to be someplace where people park and then walk a little ways to get to their final destination and enjoy the ambiance of downtown. I recognize that it does create a little bit of a traffic backup, but if those lights are timed properly, it won't create any more additional hangups for drivers, but it will add an element of pedestrian safety. And there's some other things that, you know, will be coming down the line that will add to that. There have been, unfortunately, several accidents with pedestrians in downtown Gilbert, and as traffic increase, as St. Xavier comes, we have a student population now, and also just the sheer quantity of construction and activity going on, I think anything we can do to keep those residents safe as they are walking back and forth, understanding that it may inconvenience a driver or two, but again, timing of lights is all the issue.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Edgar, I believe that particular intersection will also kind of be the gateway for our new parking garage, is that correct?
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cook, that is correct. Vaughan Avenue will be, will be a central intersection for all the developments that are occurring in the Harshick District.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Oh, just a comment, just in all the meetings, I've been involved with downtown merchants and others, this has been one of those requests that they have asked for time and time again, and so I understand exactly what you're saying, Councilmember Taylor, especially with your experience in Mesa. In this case, it appears that folks are supportive of it and understanding what might happen economically. economic development-wise, but at the same time, I think it's a great thing, great problem to have, if you will, that we have the need for traffic lights. We don't just put them on every corner. A lot of residents are asking for traffic lights in their, near their neighborhoods and things like that, and they're only put in place when they're warranted, and I think it's a good thing that one's warranted, if you will, here, because that means we're having success downtown. And I know, just from the meetings I've been in, everyone's been very supportive of this for the pedestrian standpoint, as well as some of the other changes that are coming.
Edgar, my assumption, and I'm glad that Councilmember Taylor brought this up, because I, this wasn't the capital improvement project plan, and so I just, from past approvals, thought we were all in sync, and you've brought up a great item to ponder. I assume, as Councilmember Daniel said, that the two lights that'll be close together will be in sync, and if a pedestrian at either one of the lights is to press the button to cross, that would both lights then go to red status and still be in sync, or would that then cause where they were in sync before, and then all of a sudden, one of the lights for the pedestrian crossing is no longer in sync with the other light?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmembers, I wish our town traffic engineer would be here, but he's ill today, but in general, the, we've actually installed last year a new fiber interconnect infrastructure that is going to provide additional instruments or equipment to actually time these signals together. So, to answer your question generally, yes, they're gonna be timed accordingly with regard to the traffic flow, as well as the pedestrian intersections.
And Vice Mayor Cooper, you just answered the other question, I was wondering redevelopment commission and the downtown merchants, have there been any opposed that you have known of?
Mayor, I haven't heard any concerns, and I apologize if I missed any, but I haven't heard anybody, in almost every meeting I've been in, they're asking for additional ways to get across Gilbert Road safely, and this is one of them that they've been very interested in having.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, as I look at the map here, Page and Vaughn are very close together. Is there any thought that we could get away with, Vaughn is the main pathway to that garage, so I think there's probably a lot of people gonna be crossing or wanna cross there. Can we get, move the one from Page to Vaughn? Not move it literally, but can we get rid of one and replace it with the other and still have what we need, or what are, is there any thought to that?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, I know that as part of the project, we did a thorough analysis with the traffic department to look at how the timing is gonna work, and part of the evaluation was to kinda look to see, you know, first, the warranted, the warranted nature of the Vaughn Avenue. There is, the warrants are met for Page, so there isn't an opportunity for the, the removal of the Page traffic signal to account for the traffic flow that's being seen in downtown, as long as the pedestrian traffic that's, that's crossing. So, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an opportunity for the removal of the Page at this time, especially with, with the increased densities that we're gonna start seeing in the, in the Harrison District.
And Mayor, I'd just add, as all of us know who drive through downtown Gilbert, the speed limit is very low, for good reason. There are folks walking up and down the sidewalks within inches of, of traffic, and so this is not an area we wanna encourage speeding through anyway, and so this, while it will feel a bit more congested perhaps than it does today, I think it will, again, like I said, contribute to the safety, and it's, those that are not headed through downtown will, as many of them do today, probably take an alternative route. And I'm ready to move, make, make a motion on it.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion?
I move that we approve Item Ten as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a six one vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I believe that, that has covered all the items on the consent calendar.
That is, Mayor.
Thank you. We move to the public hearing, and we have Agenda Items Sixteen through Twenty-Six. Twenty-four A has been added. Just to clarify, Twenty-four A, do we need to formally have a motion to table Twenty-four The answer is yes, and so, and I do not need to open a public hearing on that, I just can go ahead and move on that. So, I would entertain a motion to have, and that's Twenty-four, Twenty-four A.
So, I don't know if you want to, I don't know if I want to, or you can have the, come back.
Thank you. Richard, I see Twenty-four A, and on the agenda, it was noted that it was going to be a request to table. So, to our town attorney, some quick guidance on that, we do have a request from a citizen to speak on Twenty-four A. Would that be helpful for the council to hear the comment from the individual, as part of it wasn't the agenda, or if we table it, would we then contact our citizen and have him come back?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd leave that to the preference of the citizen.
Okay.
Could we ask, Richard, if you meant Twenty-four A or Twenty-four B?
Richard, excuse me from conducting business from the dais, and it was Twenty-four A that you wanted to speak about and not Twenty-four B, right? Would you like to make comments tonight, or would you like to wait until it is discussed in the public hearing?
Oh, wait for your, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for coming, I'm sorry you did not get that notice. So, I will entertain a motion that Twenty-four A, and maybe one more piece of guidance, is there a date that has been suggested? So we would just request to table it, and that would be the motion? Okay? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we table Item Twenty-four A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. The other items, before we consider opening the public hearing, Twenty-four B, I will separate, because I know we want to have discussion on that, and you may not know this yet, Vice Mayor Cook, have you had feedback from the council on the other public hearing items? Okay, let's, there are seven liquor license agenda items, and let's, we'll pull out Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty separately. For the rest of the council, Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, any discussion on those? Okay? And then on Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five, any discussion on those? Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five? Twenty-three? What I would propose then, is that I will read what's on the formal agenda. That Item Sixteen through Twenty-Six will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to, wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. In order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the council. After the public hearing, the council may act on all items, not requiring additional staff, public or councilmember comment with a single vote. And Vice Mayor Cook, what request do we have on these public hearing items to speak?
Mayor, we have no one that would like to speak on those agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Just checking council chambers to see if there are any other requests. Okay. So what I would propose is that I would entertain a motion, I'm going to open the public hearing on Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five, and then I will close the public hearing on those items.
Let's go again? Sixteen?
Let me formally do that. I open the public hearing on Agenda Items Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five. And I close the public hearing on those items, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we approve Item Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Items Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty. Any discussion? I close the public hearing on Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
May please vote. Okay, that's approved with a four three vote, and...
Note that I was one of the dissenting votes.
So, to our town clerk, we'll note that that electronic board vote is flipped between Vice Mayor Cook and Councilmember Cooper. Okay, thank you. We move to Agenda Item Twenty-three, and so I open the public hearing on Agenda Item Twenty-three. Vice Mayor Peterson, or excuse me, Councilmember Peterson, did you want to have some town presentation, or, please, I'll turn to you.
I almost got promoted.
Almost.
Exciting. I'll keep this brief, again, as much as I can. This amendment, it kinda reminds me of, of some work we did with the, the apartment that's going in across the street here to help liven up the area, but it's, it's another example of how hard it is to see into the future with central planning. In this case, we have to change our own rules, because they don't even accommodate our vision. That troubles me, especially when I think about the entrepreneur who came to the town and wanted to open up a business in Gilbert, where there was an existing vacant unit, in a mostly vacant building, where the landlord was very anxious to rent, and the entrepreneur was more than happy to pay, but that particular commercial zoning wouldn't allow that particular commercial use. I appreciate that staff has taken note of that case, but I haven't seen anything done on it yet, when it's been almost a year now that we've been aware of the problem. I sincerely wonder how much private sector growth we squash with our inflexible policies before they ever even get off the ground. I struggle to understand why we can't make that a priority, but we changed the rules for ourselves almost overnight. Now, with all that being said, I want to close by saying that I do welcome this use. I think it's a wonderful idea, I wanna see it succeed, and I hope we can be as welcoming to all the other private sector innovations in the future. With that, I'd be happy to move to approve item, well, I will, unless there's further discussion.
Just a, a quick comment, as we know, the items that Councilmember Peterson just brought up are not on the agenda, so we can't really continue discussion. We'll ask town leadership, 'cause I am not remembering that, probably, as you said, been long enough, and so I'd be interested to have that information either through an email or discussion, or if it needed to be brought back for some action, but yes, we'd like some follow-up on that, and that's all I'll say. But related to the agenda item then, it sounds like you're ready to proceed, and I entertain a motion?
I move to approve Item Twenty-three.
And I did forget one key process. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item Twenty-three, and I will entertain a motion that's already happened. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. With that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item Twenty-four B, and Town Attorney Hamblin, if you could summarize that, because that was added within the last couple of days, and for citizens that may not have seen that, we'll accept a summary.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, the town code allows any council member who vote, excuse me, who voted with a prevailing side, to seek reconsideration of a vote by having the matter placed on the next council meeting agenda. On December nineteenth, the council voted to continue Item Thirteen of the December nineteenth agenda, which was the proposed general plan amendment for the fifty-four point seven acres at the southwest corner of Riggs and Higley until March twenty-seventh, and commissioned a study on the overall retail dollars in the Santan area. On the agenda tonight, you have a motion to reconsider that vote, a majority vote if the motion is made, and if a majority vote undoes the vote of December nineteenth, in that case, there would be no directive to commission a study, and we would not, and we would need to set a new date, or even the same date if we preferred, to, because there would have been no continuance to March twenty-seventh. My advice is not to debate the merits of the application, whether it's a good idea or a poor one. First, because the agenda doesn't state we're going to debate that, and second, because when we had the, the members of the public here on December nineteenth, we continued to a date certain, March twenty-seventh, and informed them that that would be the day it would be considered, and it'd be, it would, it would be better to continue this, assuming the motion is granted, or the motion of reconsideration is granted, to continue this to another date certain, to where they, those who submitted cards and submitted input could be properly notified, and staff informs me that that could not happen sooner than February, to the February thirteenth meeting. Are there any questions about the procedure here tonight?
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I understand that the item that would be reconsidered cannot, we cannot discuss the merits of that item, but we should be able to discuss the merits of whether or not to reconsider.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just wanna be clear on that.
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, you can discuss whether a, a study ought to be commissioned, and you can discuss whether March twenty-seventh is the best day to come back, but as far as the merits of the actual application, it cannot be discovered, discussed this evening or debated this evening.
Thank you. And the public hearing is open, and because the request is to reconsider, we should probably turn to the council member that asked for that reconsideration to get some more details as a beginning point, and that would be Councilmember Ray, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was one of those who voted in favor of this at the last council meeting. After thinking about it and speaking with staff a little bit about it, I, I am going to make a motion to reconsider. The reason being, I'm okay with a continuance, but in looking at creating or commissioning a study to decide whether or not we need more residential or more commercial, or what exactly needed down there, as part of the original agenda item that was brought to us, there was a study that was mentioned in that that talked about the, the needs of retail in that area, or of commercial in that area, and so, completing a study that would cost up to fifty thousand dollars, I don't think is of benefit to the town at this point, and so I am going to make the motion to reconsider, with the intent of having it come back to the council on February thirteenth, where we then actually vote again, and my hope would be to do it without a study.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor Cook?
I fully agree with Councilmember Ray with that. The, the council communication that we received was a very extensive analysis of that particular property. I don't believe that a second analysis of that particular study would benefit, because that other study was very, very thorough, and even for me, reading through that particular study wouldn't change my mind, so I'm thinking a second study, again, probably would not change my mind, because the first one was fairly thorough.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, I never envisioned a fifty thousand dollar study. In fact, I think the analysis is fairly simple, that could be, and, and using some of the town's existing models, I've kinda thought about it, and, and, and one of the vendors that we use for our economic impact model, this, the study, if, if you will, to me, is more of a calculation, and I'm not gonna try to bore the public right now with what the calculation is, but it's not that complicated. There's just a few inputs, there are several assumptions, I don't know if that would change anybody's mind here up on the council. It does take it a step or two further from what's the Elliott Pollock study that was in there. I thought that that study was good and helpful, but there's a, a larger question that wasn't answered in there as it relates to the need for so much retail land set aside in the southern part of Gilbert, and there's some very simple calculations that I think could be run with a few assumptions, and I have to put that caveat in there. But in any case, that, it never, I never did picture this being a six-month thing with fifty thousand dollars and, you know, PricewaterhouseCoopers and all that kinda stuff, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, with that other thought in mind, that we could do a more simple calculation, which I'm not sure if it would really cost much of anything, I don't know, what does that other option entail for us in cost? Can staff answer that question?
Mayor, members of the council, we'd have
Mayor, members of the council, we'd have to do some research on that. I wouldn't know that off the top of my head.
And just to, to be fair, I haven't talked to the staff about this specifically due to the nature of this item, just kind of coming up for reconsideration tonight, but the inputs are fairly simple. Households in the area, what the common household spends, that kind of gives you the spending total. And then we can take some general retail sales per square foot, and how many, how much land we have, and how many square, and I think it's like 2.2 million, just square feet could be built on the vacant land we have right now, plus the land that's already there. And you figure out what the average spending is, or how much, I'm not explaining it very well, but it's really just a few inputs, and then you just determine what the gap is, if there is one, or what the overage is. And I would wager that the overage is pretty high, you know, as far as how much land we have set aside.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I guess my final comment on that, without, seems like there's still potential, and maybe, I'm certainly not in favor of some kind of a $50,000 study for that, but if there's a pretty simple thing that staff can work on that would give more information that might help eliminate without much cost or trouble, I would still like to look at that, or at least learn more about what that looks like. And so I'd rather not, you know, move forward with reconsideration until learning a little bit more about what that other option looks like.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Maybe I can make a suggestion, Mayor. We're talking about the south part of Gilbert because that's where the application came from, but this is really a community-wide issue. There are only so many large parcels of town left. There are some infill. I mean, if we took an inventory of the type of land and land use that we have allocated, which we obviously have access to, I think this could be a much bigger issue. Now, we're sort of faced with it because of South Gilbert, because that's where the application is, but I say that we take a step back from the study. We move forward with Councilmember Ray's suggestion to continue the item until the February 13th. And let's take a step back and see if we need to look at the community comprehensively and come up with a plan that's a well-thought-out, and not to say that yours wasn't, Councilmember Cooper, but at this time, I don't want us to feel rushed into some type of study that may not accomplish all of our needs, both in the short and the long term. So I would rather take a step back from that and maybe work with staff, see what some other communities have done, and take it comprehensively if that's the direction we decide to go as a council.
Thank you. If, I'll speak to the town attorney for just a moment. If we move forward and a vote is approved to reconsider, some of the comments that have been made by both Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Daniels could still go forward in some dialogue that are separate from the motion. The motion is just to reconsider, which.
Yes.
Triggers another event in about 30 days. And so do you have, and maybe this is then back to our town manager, do you have any suggestions, listening to Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Daniels, of how to move forward with that in addition to this request that is being made?
Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly work on that outside of the vote you'll take tonight for the reconsideration on this particular parcel, and come up, we will discuss internally and then come up with some options for you to consider on which path you may want to go down.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, members of the council, you can, I mean, all you can do now is reconsider that motion, but if you wish to give directive to town staff to do things in preparation for the 13th or another day, that's, of course, entirely appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I thought that there was some software that staff had access to to be able to run some of this, and whatever they can do without spending a bunch of money, or any money, that sounds better, no money, and give us more information would be great.
Mayor, members of the council, this would be two separate motions. First, a motion whether to reconsider the decision of December 19th, and second, if there was further direction and preparation for whenever the next meeting is, a motion for.
Okay. And what I'm hearing is, listening to our comments, the first one sounds easy. The second one, we might have to have some more dialogue on it, but.
And right now, as the motion's been stated, it continues the meeting to February 13th. You know, it can be any time.
Okay. And if we were talking in general and asked town leadership then to follow up on it, maybe the second one is just take what was said and give us some more thoughts and feedback. But I think what I'll do at this point is, listening to the council, we would be ready to close the public hearing on agenda item 24B, and then either a motion or some direction. So it's closed, and we could entertain a motion if.
Mayor, I move that we reconsider the decision of the council on item 13 of our December 19, 2013 regular meeting agenda. We're on the proposed general plan amendment for 54.7 acres on the southwest corner of Riggs and Higley. We voted to continue the matter until March 27th, 2014, and commission a study on overall retail dollars in the Santan character area.
Second.
Okay. So motion, second?
One thing I'm going to add to that motion, sorry, Vice Mayor Cook, that we then review this item on February 13th, 2014.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second?
And Mayor, members of the council, if there's some additional instruction, perhaps these should be two different motions. First, just to reconsider, and then set a new date with any additional instruction you wish to, and a second motion, set a new date with any additional instruction you wish to provide to town staff.
Councilmember Ray, are you okay if we just?
Yes, I go back to my original motion, take out the date.
Okay, thank you. With that motion, second, please vote. That is approved with a six-one vote, and again, we'll note to the town clerk that we'll make that switch, and names got him. Okay, thank you. And so, Town Attorney Hamblin, thank you for giving us some guidance. Do we have some verbiage that someone would like to put in a motion?
My only recommendation would be that whatever the motion is, that it does include some, you know, that we have the staff provide some analysis, and I'm happy to work with the staff on some thoughts there, but some analysis that will further enlighten us as to the question at hand by, whatever the date is it's proposed.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Mike, just a quick question. Again, I know we're not talking about the merits of the application, but the original intent is that you have to have a supermajority in order for that to have changed the general plan.
Approved, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So, again, back to what I'm thinking, is that even if the study, whatever small subset of that happens, it probably will not change my mind, because I'm very committed to, just as I said at the council meeting, that I don't have a crystal ball as to what is going to happen in the future, and I fully agree with Councilmember Daniels. I think we have a bigger thing that we need to look at, and I'd rather approach it from a bigger-picture perspective instead of looking at this particular item.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Peterson?
No, I was just ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Please.
Mayor, I move that the item we just voted to reconsider would be reconsidered on February 13th with the additional direction to staff to perform whatever internal analysis they can with the tools that we have available here at the town to help us understand that decision.
With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That's approved with a five-to-vote. And we'll flip-flop the names. Okay? Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, we have completed the public hearing items. We move to the administrative items, agenda item 27. Do we have some reports on our boards, commissions, and committees? Reports, yes, please.
Mayor Lewis, just real quick, Tony Bianchi has retired after eight and a half years of commitment and dedication to our planning commission. We will miss him greatly. He's been a great teacher and a great member of that commission, and just wanted to make a note of his excellent service to the town, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. The redevelopment commission met last night in a retreat format and began some discussions about future plans, visions for the downtown area. It was a great conversation, so great that we didn't even get to finish what we wanted to do, and so I think next month we'll probably have another extended informal retreat format, and of course, the public's invited to the next one. And so just watch the calendar notices as they were invited to last night's. But this is an exciting time for the redevelopment area, and we can, we're at a point where we can make some pretty neat decisions, and so we're not taking those decisions lightly, or they're not.
Thank you. I'll make a comment that, not specific to any of our boards and commissions, but there has been a question of whether or not our liaison assignments would stay the same for 2014. And informally, the feedback that I've received is that council members are wanting to continue current assignments, and many of you had new assignments given a year ago, but if you could, if you had any feedback of suggested changes, or that you might want to try something new, if you could get that to our town manager in the next week or so. If feedback doesn't come, then we'll just make that assumption and go full speed ahead with the same assignments for 2014. Future meetings? Any discussion? Agenda item 30, report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Okay. We welcome the newest member of the Banzer family. And I don't know if that's a current event we need to bring up, but there is a name change too, but it probably won't hit the newspapers, but we do welcome that new member. Agenda item 31, report from council members on current events. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I just wanted to thank our communications team for their work in 2013 in preparation for the new website. It is a great improvement. I think the community feedback already has been very positive. But with that said, of course, Happy New Year to all of our town staff and our citizens.
Thank you. Other current events from council members?
He had a birthday, didn't he, on Sunday?
He did. Our town manager had a birthday on Sunday. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, not this Saturday, but next, Care Inc. is having their annual golf classic at the Western Skies Golf Club. I encourage everyone to go to careinc.org to sign up. Oh, no, I do not golf. That's where I pay for someone else to golf. Glad to contribute, but I'm an embarrassment on the course, so. But anyway, just want to encourage everyone to support that event. It's a great opportunity to have a barbecue afterward. They're giving prizes. They're playing the best ball format, which I'm told is a fun way to do it, and sounds fun from what they described. And it's an awesome organization. Care Inc. is wonderful. We appreciate their support. They're the umbrella organization that Forest City does their work underneath, and we appreciate them, and we hope everyone will support that.
Thank you. Agenda item 32, report from mayor on current events. Probably just two. One, quick comment. There was a request from a citizen that we would have ASU U of A updates on their basketball game tonight, and I want you to know, I thought we did a good job. We stayed focused. And the reason why that request was not followed is that there was another request made that someone was taping the game and did not want to hear any scores. The one other update I give of great importance is that there will be a future meeting with the member of the office of the mayor, Kurt Sharp, when he pays, we don't have, it wouldn't be appropriate to use the word bet, when he pays for the lunch for the mayor when the Seahawks lose to the 49ers. So I did let him know the 49ers are the official team of Gilbert. That's a future event, and we thank Gilbert for their support of the 49ers.
Is there a motion in there, Mayor?
And we do love the Arizona Cardinals, too. On that note, I think it's probably time for me to end the meeting. Thank you for your attendance. Meeting adjourned.